Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Killwine. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody, really glad to hear today.
We are thrilled to have you and we are thrilled to see Julie and Colin from our team here on the call as well. What's up you guys? Good to see you.
Hello.
Good one everyone.
So today we're going to be talking about website design, page design specifically. So how we we set up and create our pages. I'd like to have us do quite a bit more of these because it is sort of one of the areas where a lot of us don't have native strengths, right? We may be creative, we may feel like we're pretty good at coming up with what to say, but bringing all of that together in a way that expresses what we want to share on the internet, that is a whole nother ballgame. And so with Get Oiling, you can make your life way easier without having to know all of the technical intricacies like coding and graphic design to be able to make something that really speaks to the people that you want to share with. And by the way, with Get Oiling, you actually don't even need to do the stuff that I'm going to share with you today. This is a little bit more advanced. We have out of the box, ready to go when you get started with us, built in sharing compliant themes for brand partners that you can use to put yourself out there. You can even have you, your face, your story, everything there. And you don't even have to do any of the stuff we're talking about today. But you're here today because you want to get a little better at expressing yourself with pages. So that's what we are going to get into. I'm going to first hop into some slides that I've put together just for some housekeeping. And then after I go through some of our pointers today, and before we get into our design, Greg is going to share a really exciting surprise update in this system as well. So as you're coming in, let us know where in the world you are and what you would like to work on today or what you're focusing on. You know, are you working on a particular page on your website? Is it your homepage? Is it something else entirely? Let us know in the chat. We're going to pop out a video so that we can get into some slides for you guys. And we'll join you back here on video here in just a bit after we've gone through our little education piece today before we get into demonstration. So today, as mentioned, we are talking about the Get Oiling Page Builder. This is a page design workshop. If you have something that you would like to work on together today, maybe go ahead and head into the Q and A and just let us know what is the page. And then of course, we can bring you out here in just a bit to work together. So today, we're going to be talking about the basics of page design. And then we'll get into a live demonstration working together with the Get Oiling Page Builder. And like I mentioned, there is a special surprise update that Greg is going to share as well. That is perfectly in line with what we're talking about today. Some really cool stuff to make your life easier where it comes to creating designs. And then as always, live help and Q and As. So if you came here looking for help, even if it has nothing to do with today's topic, head over to the Q and A and pop your question in. And if you would like to join us on a live call like this so that you can submit those Q and As, come out and chat with us and work together, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to join our weekly list where you will get an invitation to join this call as well as a link to the replay. And if you would like to work together on a call like one person has opted in ahead of time to do today, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review and secure space for you to work on something together here on a call like this one. On a call in the future, we're live every Thursday at noon Eastern US time. And finally, if you're interested in learning about this stuff, but ultimately find that you would just like for someone else to do it for you, that's an option for you as well. And our team makes some really incredible stuff. So you can go to getoiling.com/concierge to learn more. This isn't just limited to websites and design like I'm talking about today. Our team is incredibly talented, knows the system and can do all kinds of things with and for you. All right, so let me know in the chat, do you have a custom website? With Get Oiling, you do have a brand partner compliant sharing website that's built in and ready to go. You don't have to do really anything to it other than upload your name, maybe a bit of your story and a picture of yourself to customize it. But do you have pages on your website, maybe a custom homepage? Maybe a page where you go into greater detail about young living? Or maybe there's other things that you offer, right? Maybe you are a coach of some kind, maybe you offer services, you do wellness scans, maybe you're a wellness practitioner. Do you have a custom website? So today, we are going to talk about some basics first, then we'll get into some best practices. And then we're actually going to hear from Greg about a cool shortcut in the system that he's created for you. And then we're going to get into our design. So first, the basics of design. What we want to make sure that we do first is establish what the purpose of a page is. Every single page in the whole of your website, right? Whether it is an about me page or really any other page, right? Every page has a specific purpose, right? And we want to make sure that we're clear on what that is before we get started. When someone arrives here, what do I want them to know? And what do I want them to do even more importantly? So that way, we can design for the purpose of the page. If we know that our about page is where we want to introduce someone to our story, someone who's a little bit more curious about us that wants to know a little bit more depth beyond what they can see, maybe in the about section on a social profile, they go to your website, they click the about page. What's the purpose of your about page? Yes, there is a literal purpose to talk about you, but what do you want somebody to do after they read that information? You probably want them to take a step that moves them closer to being served by your business, right? So maybe that's booking a call with you, joining a free group that you have opting in for a free thing that you have so that you can get that person onto your email list as a lead into your contact manager and Get Oiling as a lead, right? So know what the purpose is first and you're going to be designing for that. That means that when you're creating your about page, for instance, you aren't just writing about you. You're starting to think about how you can frame your about story so that it makes perfect sense for them to move to the next step of booking a call with you or taking advantage of whatever it is that you're offering, right? It's going to guide the design and everything else that you do if you're clear on the purpose. So generally speaking, a purpose for a page is going to be to collect leads, to collect money, make a sale, or to send them to another place where they're probably going to do one of those two things. Okay, those are generally speaking, that's going to be the purpose of just about any page. Now you want to be looking at a maximum color palette of five colors, right? You don't want to get too visually busy on your pages. So especially if you're going very bold saturated colors that are high contrast. So think like really bright or deep blues and really bright yellows, for instance. If you have those high contrast bold colors, you're going to want to have a lot of negative space to balance things out or you're going to make the eyes super tired, right? And people aren't going to enjoy scrolling and they're going to leave sooner than they need to. We also want to simplify and pare down the number of fonts that we're using, maximum of three. And you want to limit the script fonts that you use. So the very sort of cutesy, looks like handwriting script fonts, they can actively really work against you. It's fine to use them as a nice little design punctuations here and there, but you absolutely don't want a fancy scripty font as the body text on your website, for instance. It's tiring for the eyes to read. And if we tire someone, we can't help them get to the point where they want to take the next step, right? And then finally, we want to be purposeful in how we are using images on our website, right? We don't want to have them just to have them. We want to be thinking about what they're there for. Are they evoking something? Are they demonstrating something? Are they pointing to something, right? So we're going to create and design in the page builder. But first, let's get into some page, some best practices. First, we want to have a little bit of an idea, some inspiration handy of the look that you are ultimately wanting to create by going to some existing websites and gathering those URLs or addresses, right? For those websites. So have some inspiration, go visit some websites, think, you know what? I really like how this person has their top section. Write that down for yourself and put the link there and kind of build yourself sort of like a mini document so you can have those things to reference as you're designing. And then with the purpose of your page in mind, we're going to come up with a draft of what you want to say on the page. That's your copy or your copywriting, okay? You want to try to do this as much as you can before you go and start designing because it involves a completely different set of space in your brain, right? And you can get yourself really overwhelmed and exhausted really quickly. And how many of us have tried to maybe create a website and have stormed off, nearly thrown the laptop or just felt like we needed to cry because it was frustrating? One of the biggest reasons why it is frustrating to utilize technology in a creative way is because the creative and the tech, those proficiencies involve, you know, sending, you know, sending instructions to different parts of the brain that need to kind of like, one needs to rest while the other is working, right? Until you build up those muscles. All right, so make sure that you are at least fairly clear, 75%, 50 to 75% clear on what you know you want to say, what's the story you want to share, et cetera. You will make serious modifications to your copy once you get to your page. But if you've got a good framework to start with, it'll help a lot. Then you want to gather any images that you know that you're going to use and upload those to Canva. Now, the reason why I want you to upload those to Canva is because you're going to want to use them in different resolutions or sizes, right? This many pixels by that many pixels, you want it to be short and wide or you want it to be tall and thin, right? You can modify your existing images in Canva to really fit the space that you want them to fill on your website pages. So just make sure everything is in canvas, so you can use them for those purposes. Then finally, make sure before you get started that you have set up those fonts and colors that you have ideally already set up for yourself. You've created a brand guideline, right? So you have a palette in place that you know that you're working from. You upload those colors to your Get Oiling system. We do have additional training on that and help articles. And then of course, select the fonts that you're going to use throughout your website as well. And then your brand kit or brand guideline is something that I highly, highly recommend creating for yourself. A brand kit is a feature in Canva, specifically in Canva Pro, which if you have Get Oiling, you don't have to have Canva, but it's a really smart purchase that's worth its weight in gold. If you are really committed to having your own website, not spending an absolute fortune to, you know, go have a graphic designer create every little thing that you need. You can take this into your own hands or have our team help you do it. And Canva is going to be a really important part of that. All right, so once you start designing your page, and you'll see me repeat this later on, but I want to go ahead and seed this here for you now so that this is familiar. Remember that less is more, right? Where we have a lot of text, the eye wants to move away because it feels heavy, it feels like work. Where we have a lot of high contrast colors that is straining on the eye. Again, we're drawing the eye and the attention away from what we want them to do, which is to pay attention, right? We want them to look at the page, to read what's there and to take action on what's on the page. So less is more, that's true for text, it's true for images, true for fonts, it's true for colors. And the goal, remember, of your page is to keep them engaged until they take an action, right? And engagement means they're reading, they're scrolling, they're clicking. So if you have a lot to say, make them scroll to keep reading. So if you have a paragraph and you know you want to share this whole story, understand that it's going to be more effective for you to take one or two sentences or even small statement pieces from that paragraph and put them into their own sections on the page so that they stand out, right? So that we are again drawing interest and drawing the eye further down the page. And then finally, we want to design our pages first for desktop. And then you can make modifications to make it look nicer on mobile. And we do have additional training getting into using Canva and Get Oiling. We do talk a little bit about mobile responsiveness and designing for that purpose in this training here as well. So with that, let's get started. I'm going to pop out of here and make sure that Greg can share. Do you want to share or do you want me to do it?
I'm happy to share, I have it up, I'm ready to go.
Oh, perfect, all right. You should be able to do that now.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, cool. I think we're seeing my screen now?
Yes.
Yes, so I've got some exciting new page templates that just happened to arrive at about the same time we're doing this training today. So it worked out pretty well. So when you go under pages here, previously, well, it's always been this way. So you can click add and there's a ton of page templates here that you can choose from. There's, I think it's nine new ones. There's these gray ones of different types and I'll click on some of these and show you what they are. They just have a little, just the top part is showing here. So you really have to click on them to get the full, full idea of the scope of them. So there's these up here and then there's a new, if you go to the bottom, there's a waitlist page as well for, of course, launching soon or something else, you know, something else that there's a waitlist for. Obviously, you can edit these. I just wanted to show you some of these, like for example, homepage. You can click on that and it's much more than just this headline area. You know, here's like the mobile version. You know, it indicates desktop version, image sizes. And you can click in here and edit the text, change the button, all that. So it's just more of a fill in the blanks thing, you know, swap out the image. And of course, Canva's built in, so you can go over here and replace it with a design from Canva if you'd like. There's all sorts of things you can do. The page is quite long and it shows services, testimonials and what's even, you know, it's kind of cool here too. In the very bottom, there's an invisible section that has links to the Canva templates for this. So you can click on that to edit it and then click here and then click this little open link and it'll open up that design. And then you can, then you can make your graphic and then bring it in and put it in the appropriate place. So nice streamlining there. Available, this is, you know, this is just one of the many pages here. Let me show you maybe another one here. You know, one that people often request are like a service contract or terms and conditions. Those two are here, I mean, we have essentially the template, but of course, you want to fill it in with your own legal stuff. And I think even the terms and conditions actually has a, a link to a service that we recommend using. If you want to actually generate custom terms for your website, that's needed more and more these days with the, you know, a two-way texting, if you set up a new number, they're, you know, require terms and conditions and some of that. So that's becoming more of a thing. So that's been more of a request. Let me show you, you know, there's even a link in bio page. There's a long sales page, this one is quite lengthy here. You know, a lot of sales pages tend to be that way. Just a reminder to use your AI writer if you get stuck writing any headlines. You know, title, you can swap out the graphic, your photo in there. You know, desktop and mobile versions, you can explore these, but you know, they're, they're quite extensive, these templates. So hopefully that will help out and shortcut with what you're doing. You know, testimonial section down here. You know, you can copy and duplicate sections if you have more testimonials. Here's, you know, set up payment plans, the payment options, that kind of thing. So that's a very long form sales page. And maybe the other one I'd like to show here is the waitlist page. If you've got something coming soon, but you haven't quite launched it yet. We have a form for it, which you can actually see if you go to preview, you can see the actual form here. But you can customize that, swap out the graphics, list the benefits, it kind of gives you a Mad Libs approach. Like fill out this box with this and then that's what you could do. And if you don't have something, you can just hide a section, it's like boom, 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 you know, turn it off. And then it's not there. So you don't have to do the whole thing, you can just delete or hide the sections that you don't need to. So hopefully these page templates will help streamline stuff that, you know, your projects that you're working on, in particular, you're designing from scratch. There's others, you know, beyond these, these gray templates and this waitlist, but those are the new ones. And we're very excited to have those. So with that, I can hand it back to you.
Thank you. Are you, how excited are you guys for that? If you decide that you want a sales page, there's a template in Get Oiling you can click and open up. These are designed by Pam and Pam is an absolute pro at design. So you have these cheat codes to pop right into your system. But what we're going to do today is work on some existing designs. So I have Debbie England who signed up for a live review today. I'd like to bring you out to chat and let's go take a look at your stuff first. And I do see you guys in the Q and A as well. Thank you, I think Lori and Suzanne, I'll make sure to bring you out here after we chat here with Debbie. Hi Debbie.
Hello.
How can we help?
Well, um, it's kind of hard to say. I have all of these pieces together, but I can't really translate it into, make it like, I've got great pages, they are not beautiful, they are not congruent. But my biggest thing is I, I have a ton of, I have a lot of material, I'm not sure how to get it into a member area and then get my members to that area. I think that's probably the biggest thing is I have stuff, but I don't know how to get my members in there. I can get new people in and I can tell that they're viewing things. But the mem, like I, there's so much like I get, but I don't know how to put it pieces together. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Let's take a look at your pages first because one of the things that I noticed, and actually I'll just go back to your dashboard here. One of the things that I noticed is that you don't have a custom page set up just yet. Right for the homepage of your site. So tell me a little bit about the pages that you have here and sort of what your plan is for what you want the experience to be for someone who's, who's showing up.
I wanted it to be more organized than Facebook because a lot of people got off of Facebook and I wanted them to have a place to go get the information. And so imagine it like a giant binder that, oh, I need a recipe. Oh, I want to listen to that class. And this page is almost done except the bottom part.
Okay.
And it's that workshop thing and if that could go away, that would be fantastic.
Oh, okay. I mean, do you want to like just hide it for now?
Yeah, I don't have any, it was part of a template.
Oh, got you. All right, cool. Yeah, so that's, that's hidden now.
Yay, thank you.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, and then so that's, that's that page.
And that one's done.
What are you wanting to be like the homepage for your website?
Um, it really was more about the oils and, gosh, I'm trying to even think, like, I'm a holistic practitioner in my office. So I'm a chiropractor. Um, and so the idea was a place that was inviting that kind of gave the vibe that there were a lot of natural ways to handle health.
Okay, okay, great. Well, you can definitely accomplish that with a built in theme to some degree, but it is really meant more to be, yeah, like a sharing tool, right? So it sounds like your interests right now are focused mostly on serving your existing community, right?
Well, and giving a place for people who are new, which I feel like the basis of the website that you guys already have built in has a lot of really great information that people can pull. But then to get more specific, because obviously we can't handle everything.
Got you, got you. Okay. All right, so, so then essentially when people arrive to your website, you want them, if they are your customers, you want them to be able to go and to go and log into the member area, for instance, right? But if they are not customers, maybe if they're a practice member, are you wanting maybe your, your practice page to be the homepage? Or are you wanting something different?
I really, that just happened to be, because I use oils in my office so much, I wanted it to be like, I could send them to either place, but somehow we didn't get back to one or the other.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, so then essentially what we'll want to do is for now, I would just keep it, keep things as you have them in terms of like having. So what you have right now, we'll just go back and look at this again. What you have right now is a built in lead magnet that's up here at the top, right? And you've got your story and photo and this is all great. This is, this is fantastic for now. This is actually for anybody who's watching, if you didn't know, this is something that's already built in. When you get Get Oiling, you can just go in like Debbie did and add a photo and a story. And then if we, you could either capture their information here or they move forward and you actually have a website here that has that same information, but then you've got the theme that's built in. So if, if this is really, if this website is really meant to be very oil focused, then, then this is all fine, right? And you've got a link to your chiropractic page here, great. Okay, one thing that you might consider as well, and this would be really more of a menu strategy, would be to, I would, I would maybe nix like contacts because there are other places like throughout where contact is an option. And you actually don't need to have home necessarily either. So we could get rid of those and then make sure that you add a menu header for the member area. So that way, your, your folks, when they actually go to your website, there would be like a member login, right? And they could click that from up here.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and then, yeah, you've, you've got like a nice, you know, that, that's all going to show up whether they're on one of these pages or of course, if they're on one of, one of the custom pages. So let's go take a look, since we're focusing, I think, a bit more on like on design here today. Let's go, I want to discard my changes, cancel, thank you. Okay, let's, let's go and look at, this is the one you said that you, you said is most complete, right?
As far as like, yeah, I could leave it alone and not have to do anything else.
Got you.
I have several other pages though that are just ugly, for lack of a better word.
All right, let's, we are here for ugly pages today, which one?
And I don't have a theme across the website. I use a default, my challenge is that every time I sit down to do it, I'll, you know, it'll take me a little bit to grab the concept and then I'll run with it for, you know, an hour or two. And then it'll be six months before I get back to it. And so then I have to relearn everything again.
Understood, yeah. So, so then it, an approach I might recommend is, is to sit down and think about this from a project perspective. So let's just say for instance, if your goal is to have a page, so let's just say for instance, but which, show me an ugly page, which one of these is an ugly?
Anything there is ugly besides the chiropractic page.
Okay, very great.
Thank you Lori, I'm glad you relate.
All right, so, okay, fine. Here's, here's a start. So what is your goal for creating this page?
For a momma to walk in and say, I need to know what I can use on my kids because I hear that they could be terrible for my children.
Okay, beautiful. So this is going to, so the purpose of this page is to reach mom and say, here, mom, here's what's safe. What do you ultimately want mom to do after she reads the information on this page?
Yeah, she could either grab something off her shelf or say, I, or say, I need that.
Okay, perfect. So here's how I would recommend modifying what you have on this page. Okay, first things first, we want to have a, an above the fold or hero section. Couple of different ways that that can be done. I like to use a, maybe something like this. It looks very simple right now, but if we go in and we add a background image, like a really nice, let me actually go into, what's that?
I said, look at all that pretty stuff.
We want to make sure that it's the, it's the right resolution. So here, I'm going to go in here to, I'm going to use a blog banner. That's just a preset in Canva. And we'll add like a nice color, you know, a nice gentle kind of background here. So this is for moms. So I want to find like a, you know, something that looks gentle and clean. I'm going to do like field of flowers and see what we come up with. Gorgeous, that's just, that'll work just fine, just right out of the gate. All right, this is fairly high contrast. So we'll, this is actually a good opportunity to show you guys how to modify sections like this. So if we really love that lavender field, we're going to make that lavender field the background of the top section. And this is where we're going to tell mom what's here. So for the littles in your life is a really great start. But we can go just a little bit further with that and say, you know, that this is the wellness hub for moms who, insert, fill in the blank for me.
Oh, oh, I was pulling my notes, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Gosh, I don't, brain is not here today.
It's okay, it's okay. So essentially what we're going to do here is we're going to add some padding to the top and bottom so that we can see that image back there. Then I'm going to head back over here and edit this text. And this text, we want to make this headline font, heading font, there we go. Maybe we'll, no, I don't want to be in all caps. That is something that you can change in your website settings. So I'm going to set my font, I'm going to make this decently big. I want this to work on mobile as well. So we'll say, we'll say, welcome mom. And then we'll say, scroll through, we'll tell her what to do. Scroll through the resources below to learn about kids' safe products we trust. And that's, that's a perfectly fine place to start. Now that I've got that, oops, I want to make it bigger, right? And then I want to just make sure everything is centered here. There we go. Can't read it, right? We want to get some. Um, can't read it, right? We want to get some contrast in here, so we're actually going to go to our section editor. And here we will add a background color. And it's actually this white by default. So you can just slide that opacity through here, and we can even blur some of the background, so it's not competing as much with the contrast. And we can give it some space on the top and bottom. Now, obviously, we can, we can do a lot more to play around with the text and making this look nice. Uh, but this is a section that just really calls out to her, right? Just right here at the top. Um, and so from here, this can be, this section is our favorite kid products. And what I would do here is for each one of these, for the roll-on collection, for the toothpaste, for the mighty pro. Have an individual section like this one. This is an opportunity uh, to follow the less is more principle and less is more per section. Right? So that way, you can have an image of the KidSense uh, roll-on collection, which you could just grab from the Young Living website. Um, you can have, so what we would do here, here, I'll show you an example. We would add a section like this one. Uh, and this would be the KidSense roll-on collection. So I'll grab that text here. I'll go ahead and grab all of that, actually. All right, so this is the KidSense roll-on collection. This is going to be in our. Go to our paragraph settings. That's going to be in our heading. And our button is going to go to the product, right? Now, you could do that, better way to do this, if this might be shared potentially with folks who are um. Uh, who are not on your team, who could po- potentially be team members. We're going to use our leaf link. And we're going to paste in, there we go, the roll-on collection link. And we have our sponsor and enroller information included now here. So that's what we're going to link to with the button. So that's our URL. We'll send them to um, in a new tab, because they're leaving your website. And so here, this is where you can actually go a step further, instead of just saying, you should use KidSense roll-on collection. Tell them why, right? Share a little bit of information here, a little bit of story, a little anecdote, and then you just go over to um. Actually, here, let me just paste that link in that we just created. And yeah, we can just grab that link, so save it to downloads. And then we can come back right over here, and actually, let me take a quick look at it. It has a background, so we're actually going to go over to Canva real quick. Now, I have Canva Pro. This is something that. Um, again, I really recommend. Uh, I'm going to create a logo. This is um, square image. I'm going to add that image that I just got from Young Living's website. And this is why you want to have Canva Pro. I'm going to edit the photo to remove the background, because you see that color there? We don't want that. That might not be the background on your website. So we will isolate the thing that we want to share, and then we'll expand it just as big as it can get. And then we'll download it. I will actually download this with a transparent background, because that's going to make it more useful on your website, depending on where you place it. Uh, and then, there we go. And this process that I'm sharing with you right now, you would basically be repeating this for each of the sections. Um, or sorry, for each of the the products that you want to recommend. There we go. There we go, and I'm going to make sure that this is a hundred percent. There we go. So it's nice and big. Uh, and so here, this is again where you're going to, you know, share a story about this product. And then you can just basically repeat this, you know, for each one, and that's, that is less visually overwhelming, right? Uh, than than just having everything right here. And then it's also, it's a button. And we know how we were as kids. If you've had kids, you know how kids are. If it's a button you want to push it, it's way better to have a button than a link.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would just, you know, take some time just doing this, and essentially, once you've got this design to the extent that you like it, duplicate it. Make a copy of it, and then you can go repeat for Mighty Pro and repeat for for Kidsense, et cetera. Um, and then what you might want to do here as well, um, is maybe here, we're going to say this is uh, products for all kids. Uh, for all ages, maybe. Or or essential products. That's, that's what we'll do, essential products. And then maybe we want to give that some color contrast. Because we're kind of titling that section. So the background color that we're going to use. I'm just going to grab from, you're going to want to grab from your palette, but I'm going to grab it from this lavender photo. And because it's a little bit dark, I'm going to change that text color to white. So that it stands out a little more, right? Now, once you have these designed the way that you want, you can even take this to sort of the next level, right? Like, if you are somebody who has a page that you already have designed and you want to really jazz it up. Um, you can go to the element editor here, select uh, the different elements of the section, and you can animate them. So maybe this one, we want to have uh, to uh, bounce in uh, from the left. And we want to just barely delay it. And then this section, we want to slide in. Uh, from the right, and we'll delay that similarly. Now, when you view this. You'll see that this, you see how it just bounced in like that, right? So you're you're creating some interest there. And and so again, if if you are going to be creating like a repetition of of design, make sure that it's um. Here we go, I want to, I want to zoom in right here. Okay. So done, and we'll check that one out. Um, but you know, get it to exactly how you'd like it, and then you can repeat it. For um, for the different. Um, you basically are duplicating it, so you don't have to do that work over and over again. Now, we see how the way that this is set up, there's a lot of white space up here, but this is really kind of high up. You also have the ability using the element editor to select a section like this. And to move it. Now, be mindful, this is not going to necessarily translate super well to mobile. Um, so you might need to, if you're designing for mobile. Um, here we go, you can actually move it down if you want, but if you are, you know, wanting to make sure it's mobile friendly, definitely make sure that you check. Um, because that is going to impact how far down it is sometimes, but actually, that that looks fine to me. So. Anyway, uh, but yeah, that's how I would break that up, and then I would, I would duplicate this section here. And then this now becomes the one where you start talking about the babies. This is where we're introducing. Um, you know, precious bundles, and then you have maybe some seedling products, right? So this is where you talk about seedlings. Um, another thing that you could do, and this is going to be something that if if you look at our additional training that talks about. Um, a my favorite things page. And here, let me actually show you what I mean by this. And we do have one of those as a template in the system, but if you go over here. And we type in favorite things. Um, I believe, nope, that's not it. What's that called? What do we call that? Maybe that was an affiliate page. Yes, this is it, the my favorite thing. So type in affiliate and you will find that. Um, but essentially what we're doing, and we have a template for that, uh, is we're creating a page that has a lot of information. But it has sort of a directory at the top, and there's this thing called a jump to um, section. So for instance, maybe this one's a bit further down. Um, and we're going to call this one um. Precious bundles. And this is a decent amount of um, script text, by the way. I think this is the right amount to use, right? Any more than this on a page like this is arguably too much. Um, so that's here, and what we can do is we can actually title this section. Um, precious bundles, all in one word. And if we save this, and maybe we put a link up here at the top, um, and we say. Uh, kids, and then we say babies. Uh, if we link this and maybe make it a button, and we go hashtag precious bundles and insert. When we click this, it's going to jump us down here to that section, right? So you can put a ton of information on a page, and sometimes it makes a lot of sense to you, especially if you're going to be, you know, sharing information. I think the way that you want to, with you, you've got so much that you want to share. All of this is about kids and babies, and so it's a great kids and babies directory page. Make sure you're using that leaf link, so that you're sending leads. To become your customers, instead of just sending them to Young Living to become Young Living's customer. Um, but but you can create an entire directory here, and so maybe even up here, there's uh, kids' products, babies' products. Videos, or you could have i- inside of the kids' section, maybe you have some of these videos from down here. Uh, or maybe you have an about young living section, et cetera. So um. If you have a lot of information that you want to include, definitely, um, you know, gather that and kind of have an outline. In mind of of what you you want uh, to create before you get started designing. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Awesome. Do you like where we're going with this? Do you want me to save it?
Do, I need y'all just to do this, that's the.
Hey, we've got a team who can do that for sure. Thank you for coming out today, and um, and we can definitely uh. You know, help as well, where you're talking about putting things into your vault. There's lots of trainings on that, so. Um, one step at a time, you're doing great. I think that uh, maybe take this inspiration and run with it, and maybe create some more sections. Uh, to build out that page, and I think you'll start to feel um, a lot better about this, so that you don't have to, you know, wait another six months before you pick it up again.
Yes, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming out. All right, let's see, I also have um. Um, let me see, not on the call today. Did have someone who felt out of form, but then didn't schedule, and to make sure she wasn't here. Okay, so we have um. Suzanne. I would love to review your site. Let me know if you can hear me, and we can take a quick look at it.
Yeah, I can hear you. Change my picture too, maybe, hmm? Don't know how to do that, though. Hold on. Well, I'm sorry, I can't figure that out quickly, so.
It's okay, we're going to be looking at your website the majority of the time. All right, let's go take a look here. Ooh, I love that gradient. All right.
Oh, thank goodness.
Oh, it's, it's very nice. It's, it's, it pops. Okay, so what, uh, the first thing that I see that I would, um, I would maybe recommend. Uh, modifying here is either introducing a logo here. Up here where it has your name, or maybe modifying a little bit about what's in this section, because this is supposed to be your homepage, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so um, so this is a good opportunity, uh, instead of saying, I am Suzanne, I am these things. Um, for you to maybe use this, uh, the opportunity to to communicate with somebody, if you are this person. I can help you these ways, and these ways are not necessarily going to be. These things to them, right? These are, these are the tools in your toolbox. If we um, if we hire a contractor, we want a bathroom remodel. We don't necessarily know or 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 care a great deal about the individual tools in his toolbag. We just want what are, we want our bathroom to look to the the way that we want it to.
Okay.
Right? So what does their bathroom want to look like if you're the contractor? Like, what do they want that design to be? Like, what's the, what's the thing that they want to get done? Um, and that's, that's going to be a more optimal way to utilize this section. That said, um, you've done a really nice job, I think. With uh, with the color balance there. So you don't need to change the design, you just might want to modify the copy a little bit. Ooh, okay. So these are good. There's a lot of um, of of verbiage here. If we are going to be sending them off to learn on another page. Then you might consider shortening this down a bit, because we're, we're, if we tell them too much, why would they go to the next place, right? Oh, great use of this again. That looks really nice. Okay, this is a really fantastic start for you. I'm really excited, like, that that you have created what you've made here. Um, but yeah, generally speaking, it's, my my recommendations for you are largely going to be. Uh, in the neighborhood of 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 kind of editing down your copy, so that there's a little less of it happening here. Now that said, there is a fun thing that we can do in a section like this one, where you've got this sort of three column. Uh, here's all of this stuff. Uh, and again, it will look a little bit better with the copy shored down, but let's go. Um, take a quick look. I'm going to duplicate this section and then show you. How I might play around with it if it were me. Okay, so first things first. Um, we have, if you, if you see, when we hover over, um, and I'm going to use the element editor here. You can actually select the entire sort of column, right? And and you could employ a little bit of contrast here. So you do have these nice colors up here, and so here, maybe we use like, uh, you know, this gentle green. Um, that we have up here in the corner. As the background color. And then for that section, you see, as I'm increasing the opacity. It's actually showing up here on the page. You see this right here?
Oh, yeah.
And then we can give it a little bit of padding. You just want to make sure that you're doing this identically for each one. So this one's twenty eight, um, you know, roughly twenty eight, twenty nine. I give it just a touch of padding. On the left and right, just a touch more than the fifteen that was already there. So I'll go like seventeen and seventeen. Seventeen sixteen, that's fine. Uh, so, you know, we could basically do that for each. Um, you know, giving each sort of a a little bit of a a background color, helping them to kind of pop out a little bit. Um, or the other option would be, and I'll actually go and um, remove this. And reset that padding. Back to fifteen. At sixteen's fine. Um, you could also, again, pop the the whole section out a bit, like you could, you could get all of them. And then increase uh, the opacity, and again, utilize maybe a color from your um. From your spread back here as well. So I'll use that dropper and maybe grab. You know, so you you could also do that here, and so that just gives you a little bit more of um. Visual interest as you're kind of moving down the page. So that would be one thing uh, that you could do. Certainly don't have to. I think that this is going to probably work fairly well on mobile, I suspect. Yeah, the text is going to be a little bit big on mobile here. And it also looks like we are moving off the side of the page here in that top section, so we'll want to take a look at that. Now, this services section actually looks pretty good. Let me show you, I'm going to show you how to address the space here. Um, it's actually really simple. And do you see how it actually makes a lot of sense to kind of break up our paragraphs more? Because it's, it gets really chunky. So what you want to do, number one, is first, let's take a look at our. Our content here, and just make sure that this is. That we don't have any like margins going on in any kind of interesting or weird way. I think. I'm probably not the. The best expert to investigate this right now. Here we go. Oh, um, all right, margins, yes. Um, I think that the margins might be playing a role in this. If you, uh, Greg or Julie or Colin have thoughts on this. Um, I think.
Yeah, that seems likely. That's a pretty large margin that would work well on desktop. This might be a case for copying it. If if this looks perfect on desktop, you know, making a mobile version of it, that's a little.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, let's do that. So this looks good on on mobile, or sorry, on desktop. Let's make some modifications on this one for mobile. So we're going to hide this one for mobile and hide all of these from everything that's not mobile. So the first thing that we're going to do here is se- select the section. And we want to address the margins. Because we aren't going to be able to really pad that much on mobile without it causing some potential issues. Um, so let's, let's see how this. Here, let me just reset both of these. Huh, why would it, why would it be like that?
Not sure, I think, maybe the, maybe the section width, to set the full width or something like that, too, and.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, yeah, that might be what's going on. Otherwise, you can create a new blank section and. Otherwise you can create a new blank section and copy paste the text over and try to recreate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gradient too.
Yep, it is, it's a single column section. So yeah, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do that. So what we'll do here, and you guys are getting a little bit of a bonus here on learning about uh, designing for mobile. Uh, I'm going to copy all of this text and we're just gonna create. A um, another section. Alright, so this is going to be this one here. And we're going to follow the same. Hmm, Greg, how would you suggest doing this most expeditiously? I mean, we could duplicate this and then like delete. Or hmm.
Yeah, copying that uh, background gradient. Looks like it would take a little bit of time. I mean, that would. Probably be the most reliable. Uh, I don't know if it would be the fastest necessarily because I see it's a multi-step gradient.
Yeah.
But that would be the most reliable outcome because I'm not sure. I'm sure there's some style on there that we could find with the style inspector that's causing it to be. Interesting like that, but yeah.
Yeah, it might be Suzanne a case to just kind, just uh, pop a quick email to the team because they could actually go and inspect the code. Uh, we can, you know, get this done, I think a bit more um. Uh, bit more quickly uh, than we can here on this call. Uh, but essentially what that's, you know, if you were to do it yourself, what that would entail is you just want to create us another section. And set up that gradient the same way or more or less the same way. Uh, and then you would just, you, you, you'd basically just kind of be starting over with the text, but just make sure that on the mobile section. You aren't adding a whole lot of margin, uh, because there's not really a lot of margin to work with because those devices are so narrow, right?
Okay.
Yeah, but that's essentially it. I would definitely encourage you to in your um, in your text to kind of. Break these down just a little bit. And also again, just with, with the copywriting idea, consider um. Reframing your story a little bit in the context of, of that um, contractor analogy, right?
Okay.
Your credentials are very important and, and, and they're not something that you want to avoid including. But they don't need to necessarily be center stage because what's center stage in the person's mind who's visiting your website is what's in it for me. Right? And if you're, if what you're saying can both tell them that you know what you're talking about. And show them what's in it for them, then you're winning.
Alright.
Yeah, so that's really it. I think that you are doing a really great job and I'm excited to see you do more.
Now, could you just briefly check the other, you know, the three pages?
Oh, sure, sure. Yep, absolutely. Um, what page?
Uh, well, there's, if you go to the homepage. And then there's the three. The three services that I provide, which.
Yeah.
If you could just check each of those, I'd be grateful.
Okay.
So again, pare down the wordiness to statements as opposed to. Hmm, paragraphs, yeah?
Yes, and actually what I would, what I would consider here, and this is quite different from what's on your page. You know, this, this is nice and it's, it's kind of calling some information. This is an opportunity at the top of the page here to tell someone that they're in the right place. This is what you're going to find here. Uh, and so the, the, the gradient background is really nice here. And um, and if we kind of, you know, we parse this down just a bit. Um, and maybe shrink the text size a little bit. It is a little bit large. Um, then, you know, then, then it works okay here. But where we're getting into, you know, a lot of your clients might not even know how to pronounce this. Right? Or your, your, your potential leads. So the, the combination of the. The, the busier background happening here with the content that you're trying to teach. Um, is a little bit competitive, right? So it would actually, I think, be a little bit more effective to maybe have a background like this. With, again, just like you have up at the top here, have this say, what is myofascial release, right? And that's the top section that has this great gradient. But then down here, it's black text on a white background.
Gotcha.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to make it a little bit easier to read. Um, and then I would definitely, I see how you, you have a gradient section that is on top of a gradient background. Um, that's conflicting just a bit. It's a little bit visually busy. So what I would encourage you to potentially do is um, is this an image?
Um, I think I bought that over from Canva.
Ah, I see, I see, got you. Uh, so this is something that is going to be, it is probably going to look okay on mobile. It looks a little strange on desktop. So what you might do here, because this is what it's five. Hmm, you could. Hmm, so the way that I would potentially go about doing this, and this is this page right here. Is maybe utilizing a section or, or a several sets of sections because you're, you're actually telling them, you know, here's what I can do for you, right? You could. Over here under photos. We do have, oh, we have a five photo strip. Beautiful. Okay, so you have a five photo strip here. They will stack on mobile. Uh, and then you could just do these individually on Canva and bring them over. Or you could copy this text and just use these like five columns, right? Um, so you could bring those images over or you could delete the image and say. Option one and center it, right? Uh, and then do this for each of them. And then you could actually, you know, same, same as you've done here. You could edit the element style and just like you have that gold border, uh, we can go and grab that same color. Right there. Um, oh, sorry, that's the background color. I don't want that. Just kidding. Uh, we want the. Outline the border. Here we go. That's what we want. We want to border it. There we go. And we're going to just increase. You see how that's, that's showing up there? And then you can also um. You can make it have rounded corners, kind of like you have there as well.
Oh, okay. Now I'm seeing it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So you could actually create those right here on the page. Um, and then they would be in their own section. And then of course, you know, you've got the form underneath, which is great. Um, where you just want to, you know, well, I guess on this page, you're letting them know what they could purchase from you, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Under the guise of Cocopelli myofascial release, yes.
Yeah, got you. So um, so then maybe what you would do after that section where here's all of these things. Is you would have a really nice uh, call to action, uh, where you would maybe use a header section like this one. And uh, and then you would, let me go back over here. We would add a nice big button where we would send them to another page where they purchase or something like that, right?
Well, actually, they, that's to cre- yeah, to create it, to uh, get an uh, appointment, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, so they can schedule, schedule an appointment, right? So. Um, and then you could link that right here. So after you've told them what it is, right? So you use this color background to say, here's what this page is about. What is myofascial release? Use a black text on a white background.
Yeah.
For this interior part where we're teaching. And then where, where we say, and matter of fact, let's also just pop in. Another header right here where we can say, here's how I can help you. Um, or here's how we can work together.
Yeah, I like that.
And then you've got these different sections that tell them, right? Uh, and then if this is um. Ready to get started. And then here would be. Um, click the link below to schedule our first appointment or however you want to put that, right?
Sounds great. You're going to keep it all there so I can.
Yes, ma'am, it is saved.
Thank goodness.
Alright.
Okay, so I have two more sections. One is the um, other part, so newer part of my business. Um, which is mindful care solutions.
Okay.
And um, then of course my oil page, which I just. Uh, so I could change some of that too. So again, we get down to um.
Yeah, I would do the same thing here, same thing. I, yeah, put this, uh, this is your, your sort of title section at the top with the, with the color background. This is black and white in between. And then these are images uh, that, that are in their own sections. Uh, and then you've got whatever your call to action is at the bottom for them to, to move on to their, their next um. Uh, move on to next steps. And where's the oil page?
Uh, let's see. Um, actually, it's only a link off of my homepage.
Oh, okay.
Cause it takes you directly to the. Uh, get oiling, yeah.
Oh, this one, okay. Oh, got you. Oh, this is, this is a um, a leg builder link.
Okay, I think so. I, I, I'll be honest, I don't know. It's just, but that's where it takes me, yeah.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, and this is your built-in theme. That's great. Um, and that is uh, right over here is leg builder links. And yeah, that's what you've got set up there. And so you can point to this from anywhere on your website as you have done right here. And you're sending someone to um, that built-in page. That's great.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. So glad you could come out today.
Oh, I'm so grateful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Alright, Lori, if you are still here, thank you for your patience. I would like to bring you out to chat. As well. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're going to your website and I'm going to pull it up here in just a second. Uh, but tell me a little bit about what you're looking for help with.
Well, actually, what you just did with them helped a lot. Um.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, I'm a um, nutritionist and I do somatic therapy. And I want to um, incorporate it all, you know, into one website. Cause right now the somatic therapy is on in Wix. And um. So in terms of like, the people who are here, it's basically about um, you know, busy women. Taking care of themselves because we're often the ones that are taking care of everybody else. So a page about um. You know, the in-person stuff. See, I love that water thing. I don't know.
Yeah, well, that's a video. Um, so what, yeah, so what, what you're looking to do. Is to migrate potentially this page over to your get oiling and you can absolutely do that. Um, everything that you see here, this, no, you could, I, I don't, it's not going to look exactly like this. Uh, for the, for the mobile section, but, but yeah, no, absolutely. Um, this video is very likely something. That you could um. That you could download and, and utilize. This is an image, right? That's, there, there we go. Oh, I'm not even going to get into that right now, but, but basically, if you can get this uh, this video. In the background of a page for your homepage, for instance, um. Let's see, do we have, do, do you have a homepage set up with Get Oil?
I realized as you were doing that, I do not have a homepage set up. What I have is um. The Young Living template with the lavender like.
Perfect, okay.
Then um, I have a lead magnet that's the guide, beginner's guide to healthy living or something.
Got you. Okay, yeah, so if you were to, if you, if you wanted to migrate this page over, this is going to be, we've got. A, we've got one section that's up top here, that's one column, it's got a video background. And then we've got uh, potentially a header section, but we've definitely got a. Um, a, a two-column section here or potentially actually. Uh, this would be, it would still be a two-column section because we want to, we want to position it over here. Uh, and I would actually in Canva, take this image. And put it, uh, let me see, I would use the blog banner. Uh, here, let me save this image to download. I'll show you exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I didn't know how you do that, yeah.
Yeah, so um, let's see, what did this, this is a, okay. Yeah, so essentially what we're going to do here is we'll do a two-column section. It's just one of the columns is going to be empty. I'm going to delete this photo. Right? And I'm going to go into uh, Canva here for a background image. And I'm going to use that blog banner preset like I did before. And this isn't necessarily going to work perfectly on mobile. Um, this way, there are certainly other ways to do it. And I am not the most skilled or knowledgeable designer uh, on our team, just to put that out there, full disclosure. Uh, but here's how I might do something like this. Um, so you see how this is, this image is placed. More or less like you have it placed in this section here, right? Um, so I, it's got a nice amount of, of margin on the top and the bottom. It's closer to the center than it is to the left. I'm going to send that to Get Oil. And then I'm going to have that be the background of that section. And then where you see the text, we're going to put a little box around it. Um, and make sure that it has some opacity. Uh, here, let's go ahead first and uh, we're going to. Make sure that this whole image is centered and it's going to need to be centered here as well. And in order for us to be able to see the whole thing, designing for desktop first, we're going to increase the padding. On the top and the bottom. And it might make sense potentially. Um, and make sure that it's pretty equal uh, on both. Um, what might make sense potentially is going into Canva and creating an image that has this one even smaller. But do you see how they're overlapping right now?
Yes.
We can go here and we can select all of it. And just like we did before, we can add, and I'm actually going to move this over to a new. Uh, window so I can reference it. Uh, but I'm going to go and add a border. And we'll edit them all at the same time. I'll use that same kind of beige color that you have on this existing page. And I'll make it just a little bit bigger. We'll make sure that it's opaque. Right? Um, and, and yeah, so we've, we've got some things that we can play around with here. You can obviously increase the padding so that there's more space. On the top and bottom. You can go into the content and center it. Um, and then finally. What we may do again here is um, is choose to change the way that this image is showing up. So right now I have it centered, maybe, well, it's actually, uh, yeah, I would want to change the background a little bit. But essentially that's what we can do here. Another thing we can do to play around here is edit the columns. I'm going to maybe in, decrease the size of this column. And decrease the size of this column. And duplicate it. And so now we have two blank columns. And then this one smaller one. And so you can actually see, um, if I get out of the column editor. That it is moving in the direction of the design that you have on your existing site, right? And then to create, create your top section. You can just go one column, no header. And then in the background, you can choose video. And there's actually one that's already there. You can upload one if you'd like to use it. Uh, and then you just increase, obviously yours would be that lovely um, water. Um, you can create short videos in Canva to use in here as well. And then just as you did on your site. Uh, this section, you could put in your logo in the center, right? Which maybe you have something like that already, uh, that's uploaded here in your system. Uh, I'll just use this one as an example. You know, that's your, your logo and then underneath it. Again, you want to make sure that you have your, your fonts and colors and everything uploaded to your system so that when we type be transformed. As your website says, it's actually showing up the way that you want, right? Um, but, but yeah, you, you have the ability to do everything that you have on that existing site uh, right here on, on yours.
Awesome.
Yeah. What else? Is there any other, did you have any other questions that we can maybe take a look at together?
Well, it was in the uh, I think that one was in the chat. So the page that I have, which is a wellness consult application confirmation.
Hmm, right.
I was trying to get. Anyway, you'll see once you see it. It's like a mess and I just didn't know how to. Uh, you can see how many, I think it's on the second page.
This one?
That one, mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, wow, okay.
So I was trying to get that water in the background and then I, I got the picture in the box, but I don't like all that dark color.
I got you. I see. So sometimes when, when we go a long way. It's just good to kind of press a button that takes us back to a familiar starting point. So what we'll do here is just create a new section like this one because a confirmation page, if you see me create one, it's going to be more or less like that. So just like I showed you before, that water. Um, either as an image or as a video. So you see this pencil right here. This pencil is how we're going to apply a background to the entire section. So that would be like this water here. Is that, is that what you were kind of hoping for here?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so let me actually take a quick look here. And I don't, I don't see the image. Don't worry about it. Um, basically, you're going to want to use that pencil. Uh, you could either add a color here. Or you can add, actually, you know what, you know what we could do? Uh, you could either add a color here or you can add, actually, you know what, you know what we could do? Actually, no, I don't think I can do that here. And we're a little over on time. Um, if you go into Canva. Um, I've actually done this several times before. Uh, you want to make sure it's a very short video and we do have specified, uh, the maximum size for videos. So if you say I want a video background, um, that's actually going to be in our help center. You can see like this size. Um, I don't know, Greg, if you know offhand. Um, but just make them very, very short. So, um, we'll go blog banner. As just a size. We're actually here, go create a design and type in blog banner. And I'll use that. And then you can actually search Canva for videos. So under elements.
Where maybe, maybe that's where I. No, I think that was a Wix, um, template.
Hmm. Got you. So. There's a lot of. It, and there is a way, if you, and if you show the page source. There's very likely a way for you to find and download this file that's back there. Uh, but for, for the, for the sake of expediency, um, you can create something fairly similar in Canva. So this one is sixteen seconds long. I think that's a bit longer than we need. So you would definitely. Edit the video to shorten it, right? So you can actually take that down to maybe. We just want to do that water drop ripple. And we'll max it out at like that eleven point eight, just for the sake of, of what we're doing here. And you have sort of like a sepia color over the, um. The sort of blue that's happening on your site. So we can take this. And I know this isn't sepia, but just for the sake of showing the effect, um, you can add that as maybe like a transparency. Drag it over. And so you're not actually editing the video, but you are kind of editing how it shows up, right? So it does kind of have that. That, a little bit of that amber color. You could obviously do more of it. Uh, but then if you download it. Uh, to your device. You can then upload it here to your get oiling site, right? Once that's done and it's going to take a while for it to download from Canva, uh, but once you have that there, you can put it in the background of that section and use it. Um, just like you would a photo.
Cool.
Yeah, and then you really don't need to do anything here other than just add the photo of yourself. Right? Um, you don't really have to worry about, you know, the, any other colors. If you just want to kind of show up, um. You know, as here's a picture of you and here's the text that you're sharing. Now, depending on how busy. That, um, the background is like this one is actually quite busy. I want to add some opacity or blur behind this section.
Mm-hmm.
Just a little bit so that it's easier to read, right? So that's really the furthest I would go with that. If you're going to put a video like that, like the water one back behind and then just photo a you and. Copy and paste this text into here and you should be good to go.
Oh, thank you.
It looks like you had fun with this, though.
Well, I did. It's the, the part of it is I don't really know how I get places sometimes as I play around with it. So then, but I never really, I guess I didn't know how to get back to the start without, um, losing everything, so.
Got you. Yeah, it, when in doubt, um, either create a duplicate of what you've done. Or if the duplicate that you create is going to, like, if you're basically just like, how on earth? Um, you just go and go to the sections and look for the most similar section. And by the way. Um, we are going to be at two o'clock Eastern time on our attract wall platform. That's attractwall.com slash office hours. We're going to be talking very specifically about migration of websites. So if you have a website somewhere else like you do with Wix. Uh, and you want to bring it over to your get oiling, uh, we're going to talk about how to do that on that call as well.
Awesome. Did you save that?
Uh, I have not, but I can.
Thank you.
There we go. Yeah, it's done. Fantastic. Thank you so much for coming out. Alright, and that video from Canva literally just finished downloading. Alright, you guys, thank you all for sticking around and, uh, and for investing in your business in this way. This is not the easiest stuff for a lot of us when we get started, but when. You can find something that inspires you, when you can see that something can work for you. It can light a spark and you can start connecting the dots and this can become a lot easier than you ever thought that it was. But if you ever find yourself just, you know what, I don't have the space for it, remember, we have a team. And our team can do it for you really fast usually too, like they're, they're really fast at what they do. So, um, thank you guys for being here today. We'll be back same time next week. Till then, take care. Happy designing, everybody.